So 6:00 PM. This open meeting of the Grafton's Board of Appeals is being conducted only for this It is being recorded, however. And for any person that would like to speak when the meeting is open for public comment, please step to the podium, state your name and address. At this time, I'll turn it over to Vice Chairman, Mo McCusker, who is the acting chairman for the purposes of this 40B.
Thank you. All right. So I think what we want to do this evening, we do have the traffic review engineer with us and his report, but I think the right thing to do is just maybe let the applicant go through the most recent submissions and then we can kind of dive into the traffic review. So I know we got a whole new set of plans, a couple of responses, things like that. So you want to go through what you've got?
Good evening to the record, Travis Brown, Traffic point engineer. Just to highlight some of the documents that you have received since the last meeting, we have prepared a revised set of site plans addressing Graves' engineering comments. In addition, have provided a comment response letter that accompanies that. We have done some additional weapon flagging on site to extend the flagging that was previously shown, that was areas adjacent to the pond. There's actually an area in the back, this small depression that has now been flagged. We have located those, those show on the site plan. Part of that will be under review from Echotech and Art Allen. I understand that information has been provided, we have not received any.
Travis, move the mic closer.
Yep.
Thank you.
We've also prepared a revised list of waivers provided to the board as requested. And we have also provided revised architectural plans that we are prepared to speak to to some degree tonight. I know we want to focus on traffic probably to start this meeting. We'd be prepared to speak to that as well. Probably doesn't make sense at this point to get into site engineering without having Jeff's follow-up review, but we're going to discuss it.
Well, I guess I'll just ask if anyone on the board has any questions about the documents that were delivered, the responses to Graves and then to Town Planner? I do have one comment. Yeah, so in the comments, in the response to the Town Planner, number two, about emergency Your response says, "Fire Department submitted comments as on Board of Appeals in an email dated March 13th, in which no concerns about emergency access was noted." Now, I know that the comment number two is a little bit focused on the width of the driveways, but the statement in which no emergency access was noted is really not correct. I almost wonder if you missed it. At the bottom of the Fire Department's email of March 13th, it says, "The Fire Department also has the following concerns. Here's a lack of visitor parking, which could result in inability of fire apparatus personnel to be able to take life property." They also, for what it's worth, I haven't seen a response to it, they talked about three buildings, three and four being below grade, unable to be accessed by fire apparatus. And there's some comments about the alarm control, the sprinkler system being separate areas that should be together. But, you know, I think that number two, which was talking about driveway widths and things like that, and combined with the Fire Department's comments about the lack of visitor parking, I think there is something that needs to be addressed.
Agreed. I think at some point we would need with the Fire Department in person to go through their concerns as we typically do in these projects, now that maybe we know the layout will be the layout. We thought it was premature previously, but it likely is warranted at this point.
Well, certainly at some point, but, you know, it kind of flagged me when I saw, you know, the statement that, you know, no concerns there was. Okay. The other thing, it's got to question Dan, this is again, we're after Town Planner comments. Talking about their core plan sheet, it mentions that they have provided a new plan sheet that illustrates the location of proposed four of the units. Is that standard in rental properties to actually identify specific units as affordable?
No.
I didn't think so.
No, we don't do that.
Okay. I guess they can do that.
And it's not really up to us anyway. The mass housing will dictate where these would be initially. And then after the initial rents up, they just have to maintain that ratio of 25%?
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I mean, I guess they can specify, but you just said, I learned that mass housing is going to specify.
Well, I think in the initial lease up, they're not going to want all the affordables clustered together. They want to spread them out, but it'll be up to them how they get spread out.
Okay, all right, that's fine. I don't have any other comments right now. If none of the other board members do, then I guess we can turn it over to the traffic review. Yeah. Unless the traffic review engineer wants to both take us through his review and, no, he has a.
He has a mic.
He has a mic.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Kevin Dadrion, Principal of TBC Incorporated, professional engineer in Commonwealth and a certified professional traffic operations engineer. We are working on behalf of the town to perform a pure review of the traffic study that was submitted by the applicant. This is something similar to what we do in many other communities, currently doing for the town of Oxford as well, current impact of the 40B there as well. I wasn't sure if there was already a formal traffic presentation by the applicant's team in one of the earlier meetings, but I did have a chance to go through the public comments provided in the last couple of meetings through the YouTube videos, which the town provided a link to. But I'm happy to jump right in with the context of our review unless there was a certain update they wanted to provide based on the May submission.
I don't, is there anything that you want to update us on before he goes in or just dive in?
Probably just have him dive in. Yeah, there's been no formal presentation for Mark.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, you know, they did counts back during COVID, but they just did the new counts. We got those between the last meeting and now, so it's all new stuff.
Sounds good. So we have reviewed the study that GPI prepared on behalf of the applicant that was dated May 26th. We reviewed the comprehensive permit plans, and it sounds like those were just updated. And we did, as I mentioned, have a chance to go back to look at the video recordings from the last couple of meetings because there were a number of public comments or concerns that were raised that we're able to take note of as part of our review and incorporate them where we saw fit, you know, given the other technical things that we saw. Overall, the applicant's traffic study looked at more or less the bookends of Pleasant Street with the project area being more or less right in the middle. There's the lettering there, great. So as far as the, those bookends up at 122 or down at 122A at Main Street, those do provide, you know, some of the major access points into the area. We know that there are other potential travel routes that occur between those two points, such as Hudson Avenue or Elmwood Street, other things that were not formally wrapped into the study, but do have a means of further distributing traffic beyond the couple of intersections that they looked at. There are a couple elements where I think that only would seek to reduce some of the potential traffic that was identified by GPI at those key northerly and southerly intersections, but at the same time, there's some things from an operational standpoint or safety standpoint where we've noted that it would make sense for them to be incorporated within some sort of response to our comments. Overall, I think, given the context of what occurs at Elmwood Street with the unique traffic control with a three out of four way stop, we just noted that there are certain elements there with the types of traffic signs and/or some lack of some pavement markings that is an existing condition, but that prior to the introduction of additional traffic, it would make sense to try to correct a couple of those items at these intermediate intersections. We also have seen, I think, in context of some of the public concerns that were raised that, you know, given the nature of particularly the northerly end of Pleasant Street, you know, with its windy nature and some of the topography that's involved, it does present some challenging sightlines at some of the intermediate intersections such as Hudson Ave. I think when looking at the context of the traffic data, and I think it's very important that the applicant did update all the traffic counts that they originally done in 2021, just because it provides the post-pandemic kind of new normal look at what the traffic situation is. Based on the Mastod criteria and their guidance, they've recommended that as of March of 2022, essentially all projects should be updating traffic data just because of the lack of the need to make other adjustment factors, some of which are very heavy to try to account for what was taken saying 2021 where traffic lines were depressed. So overall, that data showed that, you know, some intersections actually were slightly different. In some cases, they used the 2021 factor data because it was slightly more conservative, which is great. Ultimately, there's nothing else pertaining to those bookends that need to be done other than potentially some additional traffic data to look at the potential for warranting a signal at the intersection of Pleasant and 122. But I think we also noted that with the, some of the current trends and the travel habits that we saw, some folks use Pollard Road, you know, if there's a backup on Pleasant Street northbound to try to bypass around the area, only just take the same left and head north on 122. Over the past couple of days, I've actually taken a look at what these things that kind of rule our lives are telling us during the peak hours for what those travel habits might be like for the routes and trends to try to get to and from the site. Early morning for those that might try to get to the commuter rail station that's 10, 12 minutes away in North Grafton, or they're trying to get up to the Pike to head further in towards Boston. But also more locally, you know, for those that might try to, you know, work locally or work in Worcester. And we have an office in downtown Worcester, so when I came here today, you know, looking at what is it telling me if I was going home at 59 Pleasant Street, you know, what routes might it bring me? And the good news is that there are a lot of similarly timed routes to try to leave Worcester to come down 146, either use Elm Street and Milbury to access Milbury Street to Hudson Ave, or to go further south to Boston Road and Sutton, and then come in via 122A and Main Street. So that's good in some respects, and I understand that there are a lot of concerns about the introduction of traffic from a project like this with 104 units. They have accurately estimated the same way we would, using the standards from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, for how many trips it might generate during the day or during the peak hours, and we didn't have any issue with that. They also referenced the U.S. Census data for journey to work information for trying to estimate where those commuter type hour trips would come from and go to. And similarly, we didn't have any major issues with that. I think the fact that they had not studied some of those intermediate intersections would give a more fine-grained analysis of some of the distribution of trips, particularly if, say in the morning, if you're leaving the new project and you're trying to get towards the high school. Maybe you wouldn't take Pleasant Street all the way north, but you might use Hudson Ave to Milbury Street and go around some of that current congestion. That's certainly possible, but I don't think it changes the overall context of the broader impacts of the project. More importantly, I think there are a number of things that need to get looked at and that we can review, things like more formal assessments of the sightlines at those intersections. Because if you're coming out of Hudson Ave and you're looking to the right, that has a very short sightline for those that might seek to take a left. Most of this project-related traffic would, you know, if they're coming back to these apartments, they would be right turns, but I think knowing that the project would be introducing traffic to that local intersection, it does beg, in my opinion, for more thorough safety analysis of what's happening there. The same thing with Pollard Road where, you know, if you're coming off, say you're heading up 122, take a left on the Pollard to head across the river. When you get to the end of Pollard and you've got that triangular shaped intersection, it's very difficult looking to your right to see incoming traffic before you try to take a left and head across the Quinsigment River. So some of those additional, you know, field observations and measurements, I think, would be beneficial to establish what's there today and then to identify some potential mitigation that might make sense, just to make sure that the safety aspects of the Pleasant Street corridor from end to end are assessed before the introduction of traffic in the project. For those that aren't aware, up at 122, that is the jurisdiction of the Massachusetts Department of Transportation. So anything that might be looked at related to the signal warrants that we've recommended is under their exclusive jurisdiction, so it's really for the background information of, you know, what is that traffic scene and whether or not there's some additional coordination that they should perform with DOT and/or the town, that would be important to at least have knowledge of. The weekday morning peak hour where, you know, I understand that there's, you know, some cut-through traffic that uses Pleasant Street today, there are residents that live along the streets or they're connecting streets today, and then the traffic from the new project. When you look at the overall traffic that approaches 122 and seeks to either go straight across to head up towards town center here, or to take a left and head towards, you know, the retail establishments or the Pike or elsewhere in North Grafton, it's a considerable volume when you look at the level of conflict with the lefts and the throes that would be exacerbated by the project. That was reflected in the delays that they had estimated with their capacity analyses. And understandably, if you have just a stop sign and you add more traffic, there's going to be more delay. So making sure that the town has an understanding of what the options may be for potential changes in traffic control, I think, would be important to continue the dialogue. But I just want to make sure it's clear too that, you know, a considerable piece of that would be the existing traffic. So existing trips that are on the road that are the major contributor to that, that would only get exacerbated by extra traffic from the project. So this is something where, as we look towards potential project-related mitigation or other longer-term things that the town and/or the state may pursue with or separate from the applicant, there is a certain amount of heavy inundation of existing traffic at that intersection of Pleasant and 122. But again, with the introduction of traffic, we're talking about Volta Service Ave, which is just a letter grade, but it does increase considerably as you add traffic in a already saturated condition. As part of some of the other crash statistics that they've had to look at, there was nothing particularly notable along the corridor at the bookend intersections. And I think everybody's aware that Mastod's currently constructing that project on Main Street, which is fine-tuning some of those intersection alignments, the curb lines, the sightlines, et cetera. So I think there's very little to do with that southerly end. There may be assessment to do more on a safety standpoint at Elmwood Street, because that is a point at which traffic will turn. I think there's fewer cars that will go all the way to the end at Pleasant and Main, and because they're going to turn before that to go further east or west, you know, to get further away on 122A, depending on where they're going. As far as the speed characteristics, the data that they compiled and summarized within the report, I think, was echoed by a lot of the resident concerns at the last couple of meetings, where the 85th percentile of speed, which is the design speed that we as designers reference, is between 42 and 43 miles per hour, right in the vicinity of the project site, depending on which direction you're going. That has an impact on the safety characteristics, as I noted before, for some of these intermediate intersections, and although their site driveway location appears to be, to have superior sightlines, looking left or right, that would satisfy the criteria that we as traffic engineers use. Once you go away from there in some of those other intersections, it would be worth having a formal check to see if other clearing needs or traffic control changes might be justified. The, let's see, as far as the potential for things that we can identify at this time for potential improvements, you know, I think that the criteria for the 40B reviews and life safety, traffic safety issues, you know, is one of those paramount considerations that is important in the decision that this board will make. I do think that there are solvable aspects. I think there are some things that can be introduced that can mitigate a number of those existing trends or ones that might be exacerbated by the project-related traffic. I think beyond the cars, I think the other important thing to consider is the multimodal environment for those that are undeniably going to be walking or biking. The applicant has shown a sidewalk along their frontage and then a connection to get across Pleasant Street, but we know that they're not going to stop there. So, you know, for many of the projects that we've been involved with, whether it's Oxford or Wilmington, or many others that were performing 40B reviews in, there's always an opportunity for, you know, what we call fair share contribution for things that may be sustaining construction needs, but again, for the introduction of 104 new apartment units, that's going to introduce additional walkers and bikers. So it would be important, in our minds, to talk with the applicant about the potential for some funding that can be aggregated with other municipal funds, to look at a corridor improvement along Pleasant Street to add sidewalks. I heard from the public in the YouTube videos about some of the concerns about, you know, the proximity to utility poles or walking along the street and, you know, like myself, you know, sometimes needing to wear a fluorescent vest, you know, at the edge of the road just because there's no facilities on which to walk. So for the benefit of the walking traffic that's there today that might have additional cars passing by from the project, or those from the project that would desire to walk, it would be sensible in my mind to engage in a conversation with the applicant about that fair share contribution. Beyond that too, I think that some of the signs and markings and things that could improve safety along the corridor should be thoroughly examined, and it's something that we're happy to work with the applicant's engineer GPI to review. Once we turn to the site itself, we did not see a truck turning analysis for things like the refuse removal trucks, trash trucks, or moving trucks, or things like Amazon or other delivery trucks. That is an increasing need on a lot of these dense sites for making sure that there's distinct areas for those delivery trucks, you know, knowing that there's four major buildings plus the leasing office. You know, I think having an understanding for how those operations will occur, where those deliveries may go, where their delivery areas or mailboxes are, is important, because I think there's an opportunity with the parking ratios that the applicant has proposed, where they may have actually some flexibility based on the likely needs for parking demand, where they might be able to identify some areas that are dedicated for those types of deliveries without, you know, causing parking issues. But ultimately, I think it's a pretty customary part of the site plan process to create a truck sweep exhibit that looks at the different turning radii going around the site, not only for those trucks, but also for the fire truck apparatus. You know, I think similar to what somebody just brought up this evening, you know, trying to identify an area for visitor parking near the leasing office, but also near each of the building's main doors, because undeniably there will be visitors and not just the residents themselves. So I think having some sort of a protocol for, you know, how long those may be occupied, how are they monitored, but ultimately having something that's convenient for those that are visiting the new residents in those buildings. I think making sure that, you know, all the different signs and markings on the site, in addition to whatever may be off-site, are in compliance with the MTPCD. That's one of those standards that we use. It's a federal standard that states and towns rely on for the uniformity of those traffic control devices. I don't particularly see any issues, it's just a matter of just having the team develop and check that, and then we can go through the next iteration of the plans. They have identified a couple of different dumpster enclosures, and I think similar to the other truck sweep conversation, just to make sure that those are in an area, I know at least one of them is in a very readily accessible area for the truck that doesn't have to back up very far. The one in the southeast corner is more or less again an area of parking where it might require a little bit more backing before they can actually exit the site. That might be worth taking a quick look at just to see if there's an area that could be identified as an alternative that may not require the truck to operate in reverse for as long. I don't think it's a paramount issue, but it's something that's just a good practice to try to be used to. But again, I think just to reflect on the parking supply as well, there are a total of 204 parking spaces, unless there was a minor change with the updated plans, but when we look at the parking demand ratios for what an apartment project like this would demand, and we've seen it in all types of urban, suburban, and rural environments, they are providing something very close to two stalls per unit, which is great. The more likely need is something around 1.75 or less in this type of area, because there's still going to be a lot of drivers, you know, because even if somebody's using the commuter rail, they have to drive to the commuter rail. So I think anything in excess of 1.75 is hardy for the project. Understandably, for the developer too, the greater availability of parking would have a likely impacting on leaseability of those units. So I'm not suggesting that they arbitrarily reduce the count unless there's an opportunity to do some of these other things related to delivery truck areas for being at the side of the parking aisle so it doesn't block, you know, other vehicles for emergency vehicles. So that's a quick summary of our initial review. And again, I think there's some other data that they can collect as far as, more on the safety side, for the actual attributes of the sightlines at some of these intermediate intersections, and then try to formulate a plan for targeted safety improvements and/or traffic calming improvements that could be things like driver feedback signs, you know, the ones that light up to alert you for how fast you're going in relation to the speed limit. You know, as they continue conversations with the Fire Department, just asking about their appetite for things like speed humps or speed tables, because those things can, if they're done throughout the corridor, have a way of calming traffic, not just in one area, but as a theme along the entire stretch of Pleasant Street. So we look forward to seeing some of that. So we look forward to seeing some updates from the applicant and we're happy to continue our review and give an update to the board once that's available. Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
Nowhere do I see it addresses.
Peter, use the mic.
I'm sorry. Most traffic studies just count cars. Any deliveries of heavy materials with trucks for Brigham Hill, Crosby Road, Hudson Ave, and Milbury Street have to go over Pleasant Street now because the bridges on Brigham Hill and Milbury Street are downgraded. I don't know if that counts for anything in a traffic study.
Well, it does, so the data that's collected separates out cars from trucks.
I'm talking heavy trucks now, not UPS trucks or...
Correct, and I would imagine that any of the existing weight restrictions may be addressed in time by the town, so anything that may be occurring now might not be a long-term issue, but I think that the overall volumes for cars and trucks, you know, was wrapped into their May study using the April 5th and 6th, if I remember correctly, traffic data points for the turning movement counts and the 24-hour count that they did for a couple of days to look at those trends. You know, any introduction of trucks is, you know, they have less potential to slow, decelerate quickly, but overall, I think that type of vehicle on the road can be assessed at the same time that they're looking at these sightlines because, you know, the sightline criteria for trucks is different than cars, but to make sure that that is assessed at the same time, I think is important. But I would say that any other weight restrictions from other bridges that may be in the area is really an existing town issue, this project is not going to generate much of the way of truck traffic. So I would say that there's very little risk other than, you know, small delivery trucks that would come here and it's really a town issue to try to take care of other trucks that are now invited onto the Pleasant Street corridor because of other bridge issues. And that's something, we actually have a bridge project with the town currently, Ellsworth Town, so these types of infrastructure projects can be picked away over time with GPW or the state. So I think that probably sits in a different pocket of issues that may be very real, what's occurring now, but possibly not something that could be directly attributable for the applicant.
Right. Other questions from the board?
Yep. Just a question for the applicant. The reference to trucks and movement without operations just raised the question in my mind of whether leases will be staggered or will it be first of the month for everything?
Typically leases will be staggered, people will be moving in different times of the month, moving out different types. Typically, a move out may be at the end of the month, but typically move-ins are always staggered, they're not necessarily the beginning of the month, depends.
Other questions?
So I have a couple. I'll start with a request, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, I mean, I don't know, are you attracted to this? So maybe between the two, I don't know who actually does this, but I think it might be beneficial to the audience and people watching us to get a feeling for just how much traffic is going to be added by this project. So in other words, today you have X number of Eastbound and XY, you know, and then this is going to add some number in each direction. I wonder if anyone can kind of take us through those numbers, you know, and obviously, you know, the morning drive and the afternoon drive are going to be your highest numbers, so, you know, maybe just focus on those time. Can anyone, you know, maybe bring it up, I'm sure she can bring up the latest report, if that'll help, but again, I don't know if Kevin should do it or they should do it, but...
It's fine if Rebecca, if you want to...
Yeah, I think either one of us could probably do it. So I don't know if you do have that traffic study handy there to pull up, if not, I can figure it out on the thumb drive.
Right there, oh, is that?
I think it's up one more.
You have TMS.
Yep. And I'm just going to give you the page number. So it's Figure 2, which is on page 6 of the document. Actually, like I said, would be page 7 of your PDF, just the cover page. It's right here. So this is showing kind of existing traffic volumes as they are along Pleasant Street in the area. So you can see right in front of the site driveway, there's about 129 vehicles in the morning peak hour that are traveling southbound with roughly 300 cars in the opposite direction. And then in the afternoon, it kind of swaps essentially, with a little bit heavier traffic volume still coming northbound, just because in the afternoons you still, you tend to get some of that like retail traffic mixed in with commuter traffic and things like that in the afternoon. So there's roughly 170 cars traveling northbound, 300 cars coming southbound in the afternoon on the roadway.
And...
And this is existing traffic volumes.
It's, I don't see, can you just kind of walk us through what is left morning, right?
Yes, so the left side is the morning peak hour and the right-hand side is the evening peak hour on a typical weekday.
And what you're saying is that, you know, this is the afternoon, so this is the site location, so about 170 cars go in this direction by the site in the afternoon, 280 are going this direction, and then you can see the similar numbers for the morning, so that's, those are the numbers you're going to look at?
That's correct, yes.
What's peak hour? What time?
What time is it? So we collected the traffic counts between 7:00 and 9:00 in the morning and then from 4:00 to 6:00 in the afternoon. I don't recall right offhand what ended up being the peak hour, but I want to say it was about 7:30 to 8:30 in the morning and like 4:45 to 5:45, I believe, in the afternoon. It might be off by like 15 minutes there, but depending on intersection, but that's generally the AM and PM peak hours. And then if you jump to page 17, so this one is showing you, yeah, right here, okay. So this one is showing you what the increases would be both in the morning and in the afternoon as a result of the project. And again, the left-hand side is the weekday morning peak hour, the right-hand side is the weekday evening peak hour. And you can see in total, the site would generate 13 trips entering in the morning, 42 trips exiting in the morning, so roughly 55 overall trips. When you distribute those out over Pleasant Street, because some of those are going to be headed to and from the north, some will be headed to and from the south, you're going to end up with roughly 35 additional cars that are traveling on Pleasant Street north of the site driveway, and then roughly 17 additional cars in the morning on Pleasant Street to the south of the site driveway. In the afternoon, the volumes themselves are actually pretty close in terms of total traffic volume for those two sections of Pleasant Street, but in the afternoon, you've got 41 cars that are coming home, 24 cars that would be headed back out in the afternoon for a total of 65 cars coming in and out of the site. And roughly 36 of those, or excuse me, 46 of those are going to be to and from the north on Pleasant Street, so you'll see an additional 46 cars there, so less than one additional car a minute coming through on Pleasant Street north of the site driveway. And then south of the site driveway, you'll see 19 additional cars, so roughly one additional car every three minutes or so on that section of roadway.
And these are hourly rates?
Correct, these are hourly, yep.
So Mr. Chair, you know, just as a follow-up, you know, and for the public's benefit, it doesn't mean that there's only 55 coming out during the morning, but that's the actual peak hour. So the preceding hour and the following hour are slightly less, but that's the actual peak. So what they do and what we would do if we were preparing the study would be to overlay the actual peak time of the roadway system from the counts and then add on top of it any background trips that may come from adjacent projects, and then overlay that again with the site-generated traffic here. Overall, we found that the percent distribution was reasonable based on not only the US Census data for where people work or where, in this case, it's a residential project, so that is the key factor, is where residents in Grafton are working, needs to try to develop that model for the percentages. So overall, I don't have any issues with the way that they generated the traffic for the peak and/or how they distributed the traffic over the road system, but I think Rebecca's summary was good in the fact that overall, you're looking at about one per minute that would be generated, some of which are entering, some of it are exiting and from a couple of different directions.
And what's exactly what I noticed is really the site is going to increase the traffic on Pleasant Street by about one car per minute.
Correct.
Okay. And I can't remember the numbers that were there to begin with, so I think it was 300 in one direction, it's like over 300, like 360 total trips?
Yeah, it's about 300 in one direction, and then in the morning, there's about 120 cars in the other direction.
That's 420.
And so 420 in the morning total between the two ways, and then in the afternoon, it's a little bit higher in the opposite direction, so there's 100, I think it's 170.
So that's seven a minute today. And so you'd be standing on the side of Pleasant Street, you're going to see seven cars go by every minute during the summer, and we're essentially adding one more to that, so now it'd be eight.
So we're adding more than 10%?
Yeah, around 12%. More than 12%, 40%.
Well, keep in mind too that they're distributed in a couple of different directions, so I think ultimately, ultimately it would be less than 10% given that the aggregate of the volumes northbound and southbound Pleasant Street, when you apply the fact that it's not ongoing in one direction, I do believe it would be less than 10%.
Do we have a say? Dan?
Everybody has, can have an opinion, but as far as like the potential fluctuations of where these could go, you know, if some of those trends were to flip, I don't think it would materially affect the findings. It might change some delays at one intersection or another, but for what I've gone through, I don't think it would change the overall context of what would be truly important for the safety aspects of it.
I think it's important to, I think, recognize why we're doing this, and it's really to analyze the intersections, and I think one of the big things that Kevin noted in his report was that this is not looking at Hudson, what's the other one, Pullman?
Pollard.
Pollard. There's other streets that people are going to be using to bypass these big intersections. And so I think that's one of the, I think Kevin's recommendations was to expand the, what do you call it, the study area to include those additional intersections, because right now we're seeing turns at just two intersections. So if you agree with that, then that's something we can go back to the applicant and ask.
We had asked that last time.
We had, actually. I was going to get that, we absolutely said one Hudson and one Pollard.
Yeah.
I had to get that, but I had to be honest, I remember verbalizing Pollard and Hudson. I don't necessarily remember saying Elmwood, but yeah. But Dan, getting back to your point, the reason I'm talking about this, I understand exactly what you're saying, okay? The issues that the engineers are looking at are these intersections and what happens there, because that's generally where there's problems. But for the people out in the audience, they're concerned about walking along Pleasant Street and, you know, seven or eight times a minute almost getting killed, right? And that's really what's happening. So, you know, I think it's important to understand, first of all, you know, it's going to increase from seven to eight times a minute you've got a car going by you, you know, for whatever that's worth. I mean, it's bad today, it's going to be a little bit more bad tomorrow, right? I just wanted to try to illustrate that, and I don't know that there's much we can do about that from where we're sitting in this 40B process. I don't know, but I wanted to kind of get that out there as far as what the actual numbers were.
So one thing that I've seen other boards do in other projects is, if the solution is to perhaps look at a long-term sidewalk plan for Pleasant Street, which I'm not that familiar with this neighborhood, but it's just looking at a map of Grafton and the way Pleasant Street really connects to north and south, that's a no-brainer to me. It's surprising it's not already a bike path or something along the side of Pleasant.
That's because Pleasant Street is more like a bike path than a road.
Yeah, but you've got so many neighborhoods already existing, Christopher Drive, all these neighborhoods are already there, imagines a lot of people that want to bike or walk up and down Pleasant, and so maybe that's something that the conversation could be had with the town, GPW, or so forth, about thinking long-term, is there any plan to create a sidewalk on Pleasant? And then you could ask the applicant or put a condition on the permit, I think we've done this in other projects, to provide some kind of mitigation towards that, a fair share. Obviously you don't make them pave the entire sidewalk, but maybe some fair share.
No, and I think that Kevin has gone to, has kind of gotten, can sum that with some of these recommendations.
Correct. Miss Paul.
So you referenced data, census data relative to work locations, does that factor in school locations in town?
No, it does not, but I think that's part of the other assessment of where people will travel, you know, and I think that's part of why the Hudson Ave needs to be considered because it's not just about going to work, but, you know, the other trends and, you know, I was thinking on my way down 146, you know, because it was telling me it was the same exact time to go via Elm Street and go through the double roundabouts off 146 and then come in Milbury Street versus going down to Boston Road, and it could be, you know, if it's somebody that lives here, do I have to pick up my kid at the high school? So I'll take Milbury Street, or do I want to pick up something at, you know, Tony's or Jim's on my way home, so I'll take 122A. You know, so like those travel habits, you know, nobody's going to know the, you know, infinitesimal detail of what every person does, but I think the major trends are the things that are on these percentages, but then there's other things that might be other options to get to that larger percentage that may be going towards the north on 122 and knowing that, and, you know, I heard testimony about it through the prior meetings, that those that use Hudson to Milbury to get to the signal to take a left instead of going up to the end of Pleasant. So I think some of these future residents may do the same thing, I think it will be a proportional type of level, and there's certainly some days that are worse than others. Within our industry, you know, we're typically trying to do some fact-finding to figure out, make sure that there's not the abnormal going on in town when we do our counts, to make sure that it's a representative type of day, but, you know, we're never counting for months on end to be able to look at the broader average. What we do do as an industry is we look at the seasonal trends to say, you know, on 122 or on 146, wherever it may be, how does an April count compared to a June count to make sure that we can factor that up if it's lower than average? So some of those broader adjustments are always taken into account in these types of studies, but I think to get to the more fine-grained travel habits, to get to the schools, is it the Milbury Street School, the elementary that's just to the west, you know, certainly some folks are going to, in the peak hour, are going to be doing that instead of going to work.
And the high school?
Exactly. Yeah, I mean, Hudson's going to get you to the high school, the middle school, and the Milbury Street school.
And the high school?
And maybe even North Street, I mean...
It can lead to the North Street if you have to...
If you want the white, sorry.
What's happened at the high school, they...
Peter, closer to your mouth.
They come up Brigham Hill and get there from Hudson, go up to the senior center, make a big U-turn, drop them off at the Baff Gate, and there's hundreds. It's unbelievable. I couldn't believe it, I had to drop a couple of kids, my grandkids, off there one day, and I didn't know that was going on. And now I, I live on Brigham Hill, now I understand why when I go up at the mailbox at 7:00 in the morning, I almost get picked off because it's the school traffic, because at 7:30, it's gone.
So I think with some of these things that I pointed to in the letter and described it before, but I think... it before, but I think we're not necessarily talking about extra lanes from a capacity standpoint, say at Pleasant and Hudson. It's more about making sure that it's safe, you know, in that extra traffic that might be introduced by this project to make sure that those that might be the extra left turns going from Pleasant on to Hudson. And again, I think it's not an overwhelming volume, but I think it's going to be a portion of the 50% that's just shown off the screen here, that instead of going all the way up to 122 and taking a left, a portion of that will be leaving early to seek a different route. But it's also one of the same reasons why we've recommended the extra data to look at a traffic signal warrant analysis. Because if you were to try to identify some longer-term improvements up there, like a signal, that may reduce some of the country traffic on some of these seven streets.
So I'd like to go through some of the, some of the things you have in this report.
Can I ask one?
Absolutely.
Katrina, would you mind scrolling down just a little bit?
Up or down?
Down, so we can see the top. So, oh, the same page, very top. So the percentage here with 50 going left, 15 going straight across, and five taking a right represents 70%. So does that mean there's 30% that are potentially going Hudson or?
No, they're going down to the south, so they're going via Main Street or other local connections to the south, so.
So that's not direct, the percentage of that direction, that's percentage of total trips?
Exactly. So in aggregate, that equals 100%.
Okay.
So that's, if there's only five going to itself, correct?
That's 25.
20 over the left.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, all right. Oh, that much.
But that, so I guess what confuses me here is we know there's other outlets here. And if we have 100% represented in just these outlets, what account, where do those other trips come from that we know go down Hudson, we know go down Elmwood?
Pullard.
Pullard.
Yeah, so that would really, and that's what I was trying to describe before, so the 50% that's going to and from the north on Providence Road, 122, a percentage of that is probably taking a different route. So the bigger numbers are like the broader destinations, but this traffic network here of streets doesn't show all the different options to try to get towards, you know, where likely 50% of the traffic wants to head, that general direction.
So let me restate it, tell me I'm wrong. If we introduce the Hudson Street into this study, those numbers, the actual numbers for Providence Road, are going to come down?
Yes.
Yeah, right. And likewise, Pullard as well. I mean, so we introduce Pullard, introduce Hudson, and you actually say that in here, those numbers come down, the actual numbers come down.
Even the 20 that heads out Main Street towards 146, you know, via Boston Road, that could drop a little bit for those that might choose to do what I did on my way here today.
Trouble is, by the time we do another count, school's going to be out, we're going to lose all that school traffic. It's along this count somehow.
Yeah, I understand that. I, but I think the issue, Peter, is more along the lines of sightlines and that sort of, that doesn't.
Nevermind, but.
You know, I think we're seeing that the numbers are the numbers. They've already said that this intersection, you know, Church, Providence, Pleasant is already at service level F, and keep me honest, so I think it's, you know, and you can't get worse than that.
It's just a degree of F. So it's really just a matter of extra seconds of waiting or minutes of waiting.
My parents said minutes and hours, it doesn't matter. But so, yeah, I don't think the numbers are quite as critical as, as the sightlines and that sort of stuff.
Well, queuing is probably, the queuing, right? I mean, I'm assuming that's why we'd want to know the queuing of those side, of those side streets.
Okay.
And whether or not that could be an issue, what the delay would be if you're trying to take a left turn or a right.
I mean, there's a corner right at Hudson Ave and Pleasant Street, a long corner going to, towards the Stone Bridge, Baptist Bridge. And that's kind of blind to a point.
It is. And I came out there this evening as I was doing my last drive-through before the meeting this evening. And, you know, just reiterated what I put in the letter about trying to assess that more formally with the measurements that we can do in the field that we can verify. But it's, to me, it's not necessarily, you know, are there 15 cars going that direction instead of the end? I think what they've assessed at the end at Providence Road is probably the most conservative assessment of what's going in that direction for what might impact that level of service that you described. Anything that pulls off early and goes to be a different route, it doesn't mean that's not important as a number because it's adding traffic to some other street. It's just that I don't see capacity issues. It's really, to me, more about those safety issues of those intersections that people are turning or leaving the stop line to come back towards the project. Or those that are, say, taking a left out of Hudson to head over the bridge and head up to 122, they're now will have fewer gaps because it's the generated traffic. Again, not because of small increments of delay on the side street, but more of the safety aspects of it.
Yeah, if I can just kind of add to that, I think, you know, Kevin made a good point about, talking about if we are pulling any traffic off of, say, Providence Road and putting that over onto Hudson and Pullard, that is going to pull traffic away from, from that direction. When you look at kind of how much traffic it would pull away, we're only talking about, you know, 5, 10% of the trips that are going to be using those roads, which are, you know, three to six vehicles that would actually be using those roads. And it's really going to have a negligible impact on the traffic operations since those intersections are operating well under capacity now. But to Kevin's point, the issues are really the safety of those intersections. So while we can go out and count the whole world and show you, you know, at a municipal level, you know, one car here or two cars here going down each road, the real issue is more the safety of the corridor as a whole. So I think what makes a lot more sense is for us to go out and do a safety review of Pleasant Street and take a look at those additional intersections, look at the sightlines that were mentioned at those intersections to make sure that they are all operating well, look for any collision, you know, any areas where there might be a high number of collisions that are happening at any of those side streets that might be indicative of a safety issue, and then come back to you at the next meeting with some of that additional information once we've had a chance to do that safety review.
Other questions or comments from the board?
Have we got any, any data at all from police department on accidents on Pleasant Street? Probably not.
Well, he talks data, since I was actually in number four here.
So if it's possible, Rebecca, what's the page where it gives you the summary for at least the intersection that you did call that by?
For the ones that we did do?
Yeah.
It's right on page 10-ish. You are page 10? Sorry, I think those are stuck together. Yeah, so page 10 of the PDF.
We'll pull that.
Yeah, so it will say page nine on the bottom, but get right there.
Okay.
So these are at the two intersections at either end.
And I would take the bottom row, Main and Pleasant, with a grain of salt, only because the tip project that Mastox is building now, with all the different improvements that they're doing along Main Street, had taken into account whatever the crash data was doing at that time to try to mitigate some of those things. So the crash rate, that fourth column that says 0.88, which is a relationship of the entering traffic in the intersection and the number of average crashes per year, that's slightly over the district's average, you know, as Mastox compiles a bunch of data. Same thing with Main and Pleasant, I'm sorry, Providence Road and Pleasant. That one, because it sees more traffic, you can see that the, the numbers are lower because there's, you know, a, it might be a slightly higher number of crashes, but there's also a lot more traffic that goes through there. So overall, it's an assessment of risk of crashes based on how much traffic is there. But ultimately, the Main and Pleasant, so the second row in the, in the fourth major row, those are probably in the process of being mitigated with the improvements that Mastox is building now.
So there's an accident there too? Those are, with injury?
Yeah, I think one of the days that I came through two weeks ago, a portion of Main Street was closed and had to use Elmwood Street just to get around because of the construction activity. I don't think that was the case in early April when the updated counts were done. But since then, I've noticed some of the detour traffic has been different spots at different times.
So what I'm seeing here is that Main Street and Pleasant Street is, there's more accidents than, than, I think you said even state standards or averages or something along those lines. And we're adding more traffic to it. But, and maybe this is more to Dan, I mean, this, again, this, I mean, that, really probably nothing we can do about that. Other than some of the studies and some of the safety improvements and that sort of thing. And I accept that, the improvements that are happening on Main Street, you know, will probably help, but, I mean.
And plus 70% of the traffic from, if I read this correctly, is going north. So I don't, I don't think it's statistically significant in terms of the added volume of traffic going south on.
I agree.
Okay.
So I think this type of a table would be helpful for some of those intermediate intersections, Mr. Chair, for what they can compile prior to the next meeting.
Yep. All right. Any other questions or comments from the board? So to the applicant, so there's a lot of recommendations in here. Have you had a chance to review this and digest it and, or is that something that you need more time to?
So we have had a chance to review it and digest it and kind of come up with an action plan for how we can address it. Obviously, there's some additional data that we need to pull together, so we haven't had a chance to actually pull together that supplemental data. But we will be pulling together the data to do the, the warrant analysis, the signal warrant analysis that was requested, as well as doing that safety review for the study area or for Pleasant Street throughout the study area for all of those side street that were noted, as well as looking at the Elmwood Street intersection. And I guess the question would be, based on the letter, it was a little bit unclear whether that was a capacity analysis that was desired for the Elmwood Street intersection or just that safety type of review and looking at kind of the signage. And I know it's an awkward geometry intersection, so just wanted to verify that.
Yeah, I, Mr. Chair, I don't see any capacity issues. I'm really more focused on, you know, and there are decent sightlines too, but just making sure that there are standard signs, so instead of saying, you know, three-way stop, you know, some of the newer signs would say, you know, traffic from the left does not stop, oncoming traffic does not stop. Things like the railroad crossing signs or markings that would be on the approaches to the road, half-grade road crossing, things that could be with relatively small dollars done to bring it up to standards, you know, as extra traffic's being put on the road. But, you know, some of these items that are relatively low-hanging through, but things that really should be there, and I think at that intersection, just doing an assessment just to verify the sightlines, but then again, taking an assessment of the traffic control devices.
Quick question.
Yep.
Can you explain what the process is or what the timeline is for a traffic signal warrant analysis?
Yeah, so the process for that would be to first collect 12-hour traffic counts. So we have obviously the morning and the evening hours, but we would need to get that midday time period collected. So we would go up, do traffic counts there, and then we would look at, there's three different volume-related warrants that you could make. One is the peak hour warrant, which we have the data available to do that. One is a four-hour warrant, so you look at the traffic volumes over four hours of the day to see if there are at least, or you look at it throughout that 12-hour period to see if there are at least four hours of the day that meet certain volume thresholds. And then we also do the same thing for an eight-hour warrant. Mass DOT prefers that an eight-hour warrant be met before they install a traffic signal. They will, in some cases, particularly if there's a safety issue, install it with a four-hour. Generally, Mass DOT prefers not to install if only the peak hour warrant is met unless there's an overarching reason to do so. So if there was a significant angle collision problem, sightline issue that couldn't be addressed otherwise, those would be rare instances where they would install based on just a peak hour warrant. So then we would go through and, once we get the traffic counts in, we would take a look at those. So the, the longest part of that is really just getting the traffic counts and then we can review it very quickly.
And that just determines whether it qualifies with Mass DOT to have a signal installed?
To have a traffic signal at that location. And because it is, you know, Mass DOT's jurisdiction, we would obviously have to go to them to present that if it did meet a warrant, to request that one be installed.
And this project, just for the board's application, doesn't require a Mastox permit just because it's so far off state highway. But if there are any improvements that have to be done from a safety standpoint, DOT has jurisdiction within their state highway layout, their right-of-way. But I think they, they appreciate hearing from municipalities when there's projects that might introduce traffic to someplace where there's increased delays or crash events or other things that could potentially be mitigated. And again, like I stated earlier in my presentation, you know, an overwhelming majority of that is existing traffic. It would just be that it's exacerbated by the project-related traffic. So there would be a shared responsibility, in my opinion, for anything that would go over. And just because it satisfies a warrant doesn't mean a signal goes in. It just means that it would meet some minimum criteria to be considered for such.
Got it. Miss Paul?
Could you similarly sort of walk us through the safety review procedure? Would it address sort of the sidewalk, the need for sidewalks, or what happens with winter weather and that sort of thing?
Winter weather would be a little bit harder for us to look at since we're now in the middle of the summertime. But we would certainly go up and do similar to what we've done at the site driveway intersection, do a sightline assessment of those key side streets that, that Kevin discussed to make sure that the sightlines there are adequate. And if there are any restrictions there, then we would look for opportunities to extend the sightlines, whether that's clearing the vegetation or maybe some minor adjustments to the geometry of the intersection that could, that could help to do that. And then we'd also be looking for things like, like the signs and things like that along the roadway as well to know if there's anything that's lacking. We consider opportunities for traffic calming as well along the corridor. So if there's ways that potentially we could tighten up the intersection to kind of, and add signage to alert people that there is an intersection there as they're traveling along the roadway. And then we would also do an analysis like this of the actual collision patterns that are occurring at those intersections to note if there's any to have a high number of crashes or, or a particular pattern associated with them. So if there's a high number of angle collisions that are occurring at one of those side streets, that might be an indication that there's a safety issue, that there's a sightline issue or something at that location.
Rebecca, you mentioned that you would have to get new counts for the Pleasant Street intersection with Providence Road because you didn't have eight-hour counts, is that right?
So we don't have eight-hour turning movement counts at that location. We do have an ATR count that was done on Pleasant Street, which would. do have an ATR count that was done on Pleasant Street, which would give us midday volume. So we can kind of...
Oh, it only tells you how many cars went through and up the direction?
Exactly, yeah. So we'd likely probably repeat that, um, that ATR count so that we can use it for comparison purposes because we will now be outside of the school time period. The good thing is that we do have the morning, um, peak hour when a lot of people are headed to school. Um, and we have that evening commuter hour, which would take into account a lot of after-school activities. What we don't have is the school dismissal hour, um, you know, that, you have two, three o'clock time period when the schools are, are getting out. So we'll be able to, um, use the previous ATR to adjust those counts so that we're accounting for that volume that's occurring there.
Okay, you're comfortable with that, Kevin, in terms of doing that count after this summer?
Yeah, particularly where they have one from early April.
And then I, I think it might be, just might be useful at some point just to go through the action items so we don't lose track of what we're asking them to do, but if you want to do that now or we can...
Yeah, I was kind of heading there. It wasn't quite formalized into action items, but do you have them as?
Well, I said, I was making those are the things that we want them to do, just to make sure that they're clear. So it's the warrant analysis.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, a corridor safety review, I guess we're calling it, is from north to south, looking at the intersections of the, of the side streets and sight distances, but not looking for capacity. And I just want to be clear on that, Kevin, that you're not...
That's correct. I'm not concerned about doing extra counts on the intermediate intersections. To me, it's more about the safety aspects of those, those intersections in between the bookends that we did assess.
And then explore the traffic calming. I guess that kind of goes with the safety study, um, safety with sidewalk mitigation. I think that kind of goes on with it to provide me some recommendations in terms of how that process could go forward, and Kevin referenced, perhaps contributing to a study to look at the corridor for future sidewalks. Um, and then there's a list of things that Kevin noted under the sight lines, which I don't think we can go through, but I think all of those, numbers fifteen through twenty-one, that they can just address through a subsequent schedule.
Yeah, so, um, I do have one question. Who, who typically is responsible for doing the truck fitting template and make sure the fire truck?
The applicant can get that information from the fire department.
So the applicant should be doing that?
They can get the information. The, it, a lot of fire departments have the turning templates. If not, they have the dimensions of the fire trucks.
Okay. I, I think Graves does as well, and I didn't know if that's something Graves should be doing or the applicant should be doing.
Usually the applicant does it and then Graves or Kevin would review it.
Okay, all right, okay. Uh, just one other, one comment. Um, you know, you talked about the parking places and, you know, I, I'll just say for the record that this board in past forty B's has tended, well, first of all, the, um, I believe the town pilot requires two-point-two-five spaces per unit. This board really would like that two-point-two-five. Uh, I think we've been okay going down to two-point-oh, thereabouts, if my memory serves me correctly. So I just wanted to throw that out there. And they're, they're close to that now, and, you know, the, the one-point-seven-five may bring up some anxiety within, within the way this, certainly the way this board has handled these things in the past. Um, so the only thing I haven't heard, well, I, I just want, I heard Elmwood verbalize, Pollard and Hudson are involved in this as well, correct?
Yes, yeah.
All right. Any other comments from the board? Anyone from the public care to, um, speak? Speak about anything you want, but I prefer that you try to stay right now focused on traffic. Sir? Yeah, and everyone name and address for the record. John Morrow, fifty-four Pleasant Street. Uh, the trip generation numbers, do they include delivery trucks in that or just the tenants in the apartment complex?
Uh, that includes the overall traffic generation. So if there was a delivery truck within that peak hour, that would be within that, I believe it was fifty-five to sixty-five total trips over that peak hour.
So what we're going to see technically is, I think we had a number, somebody brought up a few meetings ago, of approximately a hundred-plus residences along Pleasant Street from one-twenty-two to one-twenty-two A. So technically, with another hundred units, we're going to be almost doubling the number of deliveries in our area. Yeah, concerns because the truck's parked in the middle of the road. Um, to Mr. Adams's point about the bridges and, um, some of the bridges being, um, I guess in disrepair and, and the loads are reduced to cross, remember how long it takes to get a bridge done in this state? What was it, six and a half years over the canal? Um, so I don't think that should, I sit in my house and I watch, I know there were counts. Now we're seeing propane tankers cutting through who go to the depot. There's some major site work going on in Sutton. There are tractor trailers, gravel trucks that are cutting through. So we're seeing a lot of traffic. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention, um, when you go out and look at the safety, I feel for the people who live in those sightline areas at Hudson and Pollard. There are convex mirrors on poles across from their tridways so they can get out. It's not a safe spot. Okay. I, I'm, I'm really concerned about, you know, the, the amount of traffic. I don't know how they get out. I, I wouldn't be able to, to see, I know, making that left out of, um, of Hudson on Pleasant Street, you just kind of punch it. There's no, there's a rock wall and trees right there on private property. So those are some other concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Why? Oh, there we go. Ah, there's the hands.
Uh, Jason Giar, I live at, uh, twenty-four Christopher Drive. My recollection is there's another project that's going on on one-twenty-two A, um, that is near Main Street, or, I'm sorry, down Main Street, near where Pleasant intersects with one-twenty-two A. Is that correct? Does anyone know what the number of units that is?
Two hundred.
I'm sorry?
Hundred.
A hundred? Do we have any idea of what kind of traffic is going to be generated by that development? Because obviously those numbers aren't going to be included in whatever was counted.
So, yeah, I mean, he actually, Kevin actually mentioned it in, in his report. So I'll let you speak to that.
So, um, I had checked with Katrina, um, just for some of those background projects that are in the area that haven't been built yet, just to get an understanding of what might get loaded in to that future year condition with and without this project overlay. So that project, uh, would have a similar trip-making ability, you know, having a hundred units versus a hundred and four. Um, I would fully expect that the general travel patterns would be the same. So that would add some additional traffic to Pleasant Street, um, from south to north, in particular, uh, in the morning for those that are trying to get to some of those broader, you know, destinations towards the north. Um, as, as we looked at that potential in relation to what's there plus the project, um, it would theoretically only dilute percentages related to this project. Um, I don't know, is it already permitted, but just not yet?
It's already...
So, um, um, I don't think it's going to have a material change in the recommendations for any of the intersections. It's really just a matter of, it's just one more project that's going to invite traffic to the roadway system and therefore putting more importance on the safety aspects for all those intersections from north to south.
And in terms of the, um, the stone bridge that's there, a very narrow stone bridge, uh, you know, I think that is, for me personally, is one of my main concerns. You know, as someone who's actually walked across that bridge with cars coming self-down Pleasant, uh, they come around that corner, that there's a dip and there's no place to go. Um, so, you know, that is certainly an area of concern, but I know I had raised in my public comment and I think some other people have raised it as well too. Um, so, you know, to extend that can be looked at. I'm not sure what can be done, um, but...
Close to my...
Oh, sorry. I'm not sure what can be done to, you know, fix that, but I do think it's an area of concern that needs to be looked at.
Absolutely. And I suggested it's, it's that same area where, um, uh, with some of the other intersections that are immediately north of there that have challenging sightlines. Um, it could be the introduction of some signs with, you know, curve signs and/or road slash bridge narrows, um, other things that can alert traffic to those that are there. And, um, I've got family in the area, so another bridge, and it's a lot of these older bridges like Depot Street, um, where, you know, they're extremely narrow, um, and you would think it would slope for people. Um, but unfortunately, it doesn't always do so. But I think having the right devices to alert traffic, particularly for those that may not be as familiar to what's coming ahead. But, um, yes, it's a, it's a very clear and obvious constraint, um, but that would be one of those things that I would recommend that they take a look at. And I, I think along with some of the analysis, some of the sightlines that they can assess, I think, you know, maybe they can put together a graphic that shows the Pleasant Street corridor that identifies some of these things so it's very clear and readable for the board and for the public to identify those areas where they saw the potential for, uh, some of these types of safety improvements.
My recollection, um, was that there's some new legislation that got signed into law by Governor Baker, um, with regard to passing a pedestrian on the road when they're actually in the road. I mean, you need to give them four feet of space when you're passing them. Um, so that particular bridge, obviously that's a big problem if you're going to give somebody four feet of, uh, buffer, if you will. So...
Yeah, and then I think that's, you know, that's a motor vehicle law that, you know, there is always an enforcement piece that goes along with the engineering piece that anything that we do. So, you know, I know this, this town has a very active traffic safety committee as well. So I think that some of those things that are, uh, issues independent of this private project, um, would be important to vocalize, to, to collaborate on, um, so that there could be some longer-term improvements. And then I believe it's probably a historic bridge, but I don't know that for sure, but certainly the characteristics would tell me that. Um, and whether or not there's the ability to add a sidewalk onto it, or is there a separate facility that the town can do, again, as part of the longer-term, you know, pedestrian improvements that could occur that maybe the applicant can contribute to. That, that's a, uh, a very good point for an area that should be highlighted within those, you know, future plans. Okay?
Thank you.
Can I just clarify, the bridge that he's talking about, is this the, the bridge that's up north?
Yes.
Colleen Roy, fifty-three Elmwood Street. Uh, I just want to start by saying I totally support this project, but I am really familiar with this stretch of roadway, and I'd heard mention of the three-way stop at Elmwood, and I know you guys are going back and looking at, um, the safety of that. I actually am the reason that there is a big sign that it says three-way stop, but people really don't always understand that. I did hear mention of traffic when people are thinking about outlets at Hudson for Milbury and the high school. I didn't really hear a lot of mention of South Raffin Elementary, and I think they will be, um, using outlet going right down there. I just wanted to bring it up so people are aware of it.
So, there's another one, sir?
Ken Swadreck, fifty-two Sunrise Ave. Um, we talked about, oh, we heard that this is a rated F intersection, and how bad does it have to be that it becomes a true safety thing? How, can you get like an F minus or F minus minus to say we can't handle anything until, say like a traffic light goes in there, right? Is that, is that on the table to say we have to do this stuff first? Because that's what we're talking about here, is safety.
Ian, what the three?
Yeah, it's a great question, and I think, you know, if this was not a forty-B project, I think it would be a lot easier for the town, for the planning board, if the planning board was the one reviewing this project to say, you know, this, this is a, this is an intersection, this project can't go forward until there's a remedy. Um, and it's prob, given that seventy percent of the traffic is going into this intersection, or maybe not seventy, but maybe sixty or something, um, that, that, that you'd have a basis for that kind of a condition. But forty-B is a different world, and so we don't have the same type of, for lack of a better word, leverage to...
This isn't, this isn't to stop the project. This is in effect to help it, right? Because I think a lot of the angst would go away if you knew the traffic pattern would, would get better, because we all know it's bad now, right? Because what I didn't see anybody talk about, what's the average time it takes to do a left-hand turn onto Providence Road from Pleasant Street? I don't even know if that's possible to track that.
Well, do, do you have a queueing? Wasn't there a level of service analysis?
There was a level of service analysis.
So I think we have it.
Right, so in those early mornings, I mean, that stuff is, is backing up, right? The second question I had was...
That's what makes it an F, is the delay taking a left turn is so long it's an F.
Okay, right. So the other thing is that, um, basically, you're talking about close to two cars per unit in there, right? What percentage of those cars are going to be using Pleasant Street to be getting out every day? And you came up some kind of, I know you came up these numbers, and it just, it all kind of got blurry for me. I just needed to understand that better, right? So if it's, say it's two hundred cars, right, are twenty percent going to not be leaving the premises during the day, or is it, or what?
Well, I, I think I summarized it when I said there'll be about sixty cars, there'll be about sixty more trips during the peak hour in the morning and the peak hour in the afternoon. Roughly speaking, there'll be about sixty more trips. So, so that's car most in the morning, it's mostly cars leaving, but some coming in, and in the afternoon it's mostly cars coming in, few leaving.
So sixty cars?
Sixty cars, sixty trips, cars is what I'm going to call them.
Sixty cars, but there's two hundred cars on the parking lot.
Yeah, but everybody doesn't leave at the same time, right? So that's, that's a peak hour.
No disagreement, right. I'm, we're just saying it's like, somebody come up with that, somebody came up with that number, right?
Yeah, you know, I, I've been doing this a long time, and I really questioned some of these numbers when they first go around, but I've since learned that, you know, the, the, it, they tend to be accurate. They tend to be accurate. And if you think about it, I mean, you know, there's a hundred units. So I, I think that sixty number almost seems high. That's saying sixty percent of the units are going to be sending a car out or in during that one hour. And, you know, there's an hour before that and an hour after that where there's people coming and going as well. So, you know, I, 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 those, those numbers seem real to me. They seem real to me. If anything, they almost seems high, but...
My, my last comment is, we have a state rep who lives in town who could help us, I would think, with DOT to push something through if we really need it. And, and something just came up in my mind, we've lived in town a long time, there was never a light at Milbury Street. How did that come about, right? What caused that, what caused that to happen?
School. I'm not afraid of schools.
Okay, right. But there were a lot of accidents down there, right, yeah. So I mean, I'm just asking if we could just, may, try to make it a win-win here for people. Where if we get, if you get the light, it hurts the traffic, you know, makes things, makes things a little bit more palatable to a lot of people.
So, you know, I, I, I probably speak a little more kind of nearly about this than Dan does. That's why he gets paid. You know, you gotta, you gotta step back and say forty-B was created because in the state's mind, towns like Grafton, we're doing things with their zoning and doing things with allowing or not allowing the building, creating an environment such that we don't, we're not carrying our share of affordable housing. That's what the state says. And if you think about something like this, an intersection that already has a service level F, right, it already is bad, you know, for us to say to the developer, you need to pay to help fix that, or, or you can't develop until that gets fixed, that's just an extension of zoning that's exclusionary and some of these other things that the state has said, you know, is, is a problem. So, so the state's basically going to say, you know, if that intersection's bad, Grafton, you got to fix that, right, to, so that you can support your share of affordable housing. That's at a very high level how this, how, how they think about this thing.
That's exactly, if he gets...
So what, you know, what we're asking them to do is some of the analysis, so at least we have some of the beginnings of getting these things fixed.
Right.
Get some of the analysis, get some of the documentation, identifying what needs to be done. If there's things they can do and we, you know, we'll ask them to do it, maybe other things like the, like a traffic light, at least it gets the ball rolling towards a traffic light, if that's appropriate.
So if the light goes in, who pays for it?
You and I.
Okay, I mean, I...
It's the state, it's not, it's not that...
Okay, state, and the state pays for it. It's not like these guys have to pay for it, or the town has to pay for it. It comes out of, it comes out of state funds.
Yeah, yeah.
Right?
I, I would think so.
I'm just trying to think of a way to make these things go on a parallel track so that, again, the angst would go, with the angst would go, well, nobody was... Well, nobody was, what I heard was, well, if it's a six-hour thing, the state may not want to do it, this kind of stuff. We really need, we really need some help at a political level to make things move. And as long as we have a rep in town, let's use it. That's it, okay?
Mr. Chair, just as a follow-up. It might be helpful to provide context from other recent peer reviews that we've done that have resulted in resources that towns could use to try to affect those longer-term improvements. We just completed a significant peer review for a similarly scaled dense apartment complex in Wilmington just off 93. In working with their community development department, the ZBA, through the 40B review process, there were similar types of challenges identified at a key signalized intersection. And there, there was a signal, but it was just outdated. There was a high crash trend, longer delays. That was an existing issue that was previously studied and identified in kind of like a master plan. Through the collaborative efforts between us and the applicant's team on that project, there was a negotiated fair share contribution that could be applied towards the longer-term improvements that may not build it immediately, but what it might do is provide the town some resources to do some planning, combined with the investigative data that GPI is currently on track to, to help create concepts that can then be approached to the state to try to go through that project development process. So that having some resources that might be there on a fair share basis that doesn't have to go to town meeting to start to activate a project. Some of those items can be critical to try to create the momentum to start something there with a, with a contribution. So it doesn't mean that it happens immediately because it's a very purposeful deliberate process that occurs with the state to identify projects, select them, advance them over a multi-year process. But it all starts with having the ability to, to start with something.
Yeah, understood, thank you. Does anyone else, ma'am, in the middle?
Hi, everyone. Julie Capicello, 34 Pleasant Street. So I just want to first of all thank everybody here at the board and everyone here behind me for the discussion. So I took some notes, really good discussion here. And I think it's given us all pause. And obviously, the F rating is the most concerning and what we can do about that. But just a couple other, couple comments about it, safety being the first issue. So I understand the study was done over the course of like one day, but just like the morning hours of, and my question is, is that standard operating a procedure just to do one day or to take, would it make more sense to do a few more days and take the average? So that's one question. We talked about traffic calming, which I guess I've never heard that, that term before. And I saw speed bumps were mentioned. Some other towns, and I've brought this up before, I think, have had stop signs to mitigate traffic at all cross streets. So just want to throw that up there on the table again because I think that's a great idea for maybe people that are using Pleasant Street as a cut-through. If you have to stop at every single cross street or for the majority of them, is that going to persuade people to not cut through? Good for that. Colleen, you had mentioned the signage for the freeway. I love it, but I think, Kevin, you had also mentioned more signage needed in like oncoming traffic does not stop. I think that would be great because so many people in the area do not know how to use that intersection. So more signage would be great. And just one final plug, more sidewalks. I am a huge proponent of sidewalks. If we can somehow negotiate that too. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken, you want to explain something else?
Yeah, I'm happy to. I think as far as the number of counts, this project is somewhat unique in the fact that they've done two studies. So they do have a couple data points that have looked at over two different years. And yes, the first time was in the middle of the pandemic. But I think with what was recently counted in the beginning of April really did substantiate what had been done in the fact that, at least locally, there wasn't such a huge variation in what occurred, maybe in 2020, but not so much 2021. But it is standard practice for the industry, for better or worse, to really look at a couple days of data. But based on what I've seen from the original study and this and the other data that they referenced from the state, I'm comfortable that it's a good representation. The other traffic calming measures, stop signs, the standards of use specifically state that stop signs cannot be used for traffic calming. So they cannot be arbitrarily put in. Multiway stops can be considered if it meets certain volume warrants or if there is an intersection whose safety sightline characteristics cannot be addressed through other physical improvements. So for an example, as they do their safety assessment, depending on the sightlines that they discover at Hudson Ave, there's a right-of-way and then there's private property. There's some topography there with a rock wall and other vegetation. Whether it's in the right-of-way or on private property, I don't know at this point. I don't think they know at this point. But if there was something that could not be mitigated without trying to acquire property and without changing the context of that area, you know, that could be an application for doing an always stop because of the nuance of the safety aspects. Others that might be on the straight-of-way, clear sightlines, stop signs cannot be used for those applications. But the other signs is something that I think they've acknowledged that they can take a look at to make sure that they're up to standards.
Okay. Somebody else have a question?
Lindsay Fox, 61 Sunrise Ave. I just have a question about the traffic study and the crash data. Does it take into account the accidents that occur along Pleasant Street or is it just at the intersections? Lindsay, what was your answer today? 61 Sunrise.
I think that's what's still in front of us. I think categorizing those crashes and where in between. I think, as they can pull from MassDOT's crash portal, it's pretty easy to get all the crashes that occurred within there, most of which will be at intersections. But I'm sure there's some other, you know, single car, you know, off the road, fixed object type crashes that would be pretty easy to quantify how many times it was in the situation.
Yeah, I was gonna just reiterate the same exact thing. So the study that's been done to date has only included the crashes at those two ends, but we will look at Pleasant Street as a whole. So not just the, the three locations that were identified that are sightline concerns. We'll look at Pleasant Street as a whole because of those things like running off the road around a corner or something like that, that would be a safety issue that wouldn't be right at an intersection. So we will be doing that.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Scott Mavitsky, 49 Pleasant Street. This safety study, how does that, does that take into consideration road width? Like at all these different curves and people pulling out of driveways? Just curious.
So we will be doing kind of a general safety review, looking at, you know, signage and if there's areas where there's a narrowing of the road, you know, around a curve or things like that, that might be an issue that would come up. So we'll, we'll look at the road as a whole to make sure that it meets design standards and that there's nothing that would create a potential safety issue along the road.
And, and we've talked a lot about sightlines, but we're talking about sightlines of existing intersections. There's 100-plus people that live on this road that pull out of their driveway onto this road. And we're not doing, I'm assuming you're not going and doing sightline assessments on a safety perspective to 100-plus residents, people pulling out of driveway. I'm on a shared driveway with three different homes on it, but I can't see five feet to my left. And that's one property away from an additional car per minute. I, I had a question for Peter, I missed the name, I'm sorry. But you kept stating the term not overwhelming volume increase. Can, can you provide some context around, because a 10%, 20% increase in an area that's not safe to me seems overwhelming.
Yeah, I, I think that's a fair point, Mr. Chair. You know, as far as the, the perception of the change instead of the, like the capacity considerations. So, you know, I, I think that's a fair point as far as the, the percentage of change and what it will feel like. Unfortunately, you know, when we do the studies, it's looking at some of these safety aspects, some of the capacity impacts. But there's not necessarily a metric to say if you increase traffic on a road by a certain percentage that, you know, it shouldn't go through. It's unfortunately part, you know, background growth, regional growth, specific projects like this, you know, might feel different on the level of roughly 10% more traffic. Very likely. And, and maybe it was insensitive to use the term overwhelming because I think it's all relative, right? It's, it's relative to what you've experienced in the past and those incremental increases that, you know, maybe 10 years, you say, wait, how did we get all this traffic? Whether it's cut through, I, I heard somebody say at the last meeting, cut through from Sutton. You know, so somebody else's project in an adjacent town can affect the traffic on your street. But I think ultimately, the volume of the change and the percentage of change are somewhat different. But there, undeniably, will be kind of a different perception pre- and post by some people that are maybe closest to the project or ones that are maybe near some of those key intersections. But there's not necessarily a metric to say you increase it by 16%, you know, shut the door on the project. It's going to be more of that relative experience from what you're pointing to. You know, it'll be, it'll be different.
If I can, I got a couple more questions. We haven't talked about speed. 43 mile per hour average. I challenge interview to go down that road and go 43 miles an hour. I did it the other day because I learned that cops can't go on that road because it's too narrow. Just stop people on that road. I felt like a race car there. I mean, that is not safe. I mean, let's cut through all the BS and numbers. Common sense tells you that's not safe, right? I mean, and to add 100-plus density to that, I mean, this just seems wild to me. I have a solution. Something that's not high-density volume, single-family homes. Just throwing it out there again. This is 40B. So it's a state mandate that's saying, your zone for this, our town says this is what would be appropriate for this. But the state is saying, like, ignore all that, you lose your ability to do that. And now we're talking about an entire road project, a road that we all know as common sense, you can't put sidewalks there without a massive project. A traffic light, changing all these, all I hear is dollar signs, dollar signs, dollar signs, dollar signs, dollar signs. I mean, anyone with common sense, no, we would have denied this and sent them out the door right off the bat if 40B didn't exist. Does the state help at all with all this additional cost that we're now left with, we just approved $7 million to do a road over? This is way bigger than that. And, and now we're going to be asked for that further burden due to some developer-friendly state mandate. I ask that this state, this, this board really consider that and push as much as we can against this and against 40B in general in this particular case. I love the fact we can get affordable housing. We just, we should do it and still hit our 10%, but do it in a way that makes sense. This doesn't make sense. Thank you. So that's...
Thank you. You don't want to talk and follow it up?
That's going to be hard.
Three shot.
Eric Solomon, 11 Cheryl. You're talking for mitigating some of the safety issues, stop signs, signage. Is there actually any, I, I run on the road, it's terrible. And other roads, and there's signage, people ignore it. Is there any data that says, hey, we put this thing up, what do we actually get in return out of that? I mean, I like the idea of the speed humps, I think that could be effective. Stop signs also, but is there any data behind, you know? I drive on the highway, so 65, everyone does 80, you know? Signage doesn't seem to me like it's a solution. And there's an enforcement issue with the fact that the police can't, you know, safely patrol the area. So how does that add in? Let you answer.
Sure, Mr. Chair. There is data out there, I don't have it at my fingertips this evening, but what I can tell you is that certain devices, whether it's traffic calming devices or the driver feedback signs that alert traffic to how fast you're going in relation to the speed limit. You know, it's the, it has the radar unit, gets your car and then flashes up what you're doing. Sometimes it'll flash if you're over the speed limit. Those actually do have a significant improvement for compliance for speed. But ultimately, if you're on a, you know, section of Pleasant Street that's 20 feet wide with no sidewalks and if, if somebody continues to go at the 85th percentile of 42, 43 miles an hour, it's going to be uncomfortable. And, you know, this is not unique to Pleasant Street in Grafton. You know, there's projects in South Rowan, Wayland, and many other places where, you know, the cow paths that have become roadways and they're still narrow, they're still windy, and for some reason, traffic continues to go fast. For something like this and the thing that we've asked them to look at from a safety standpoint, but also targeted traffic calming, can help if it's done uniformly along a corridor and not just in one spot location. What the data does suggest is that if you say, you put two in close proximity, two speed humps, say, you know, within 500 feet of each other, people are going to accelerate unless they can see the next device that would cause them to maintain a similarly slow speed. So these aren't things that necessarily should be done as a one-off, but something that's strategically put down, again, to try to change the context of the neighborhood for those that are either living there and driving too fast or more likely than not, passing through your neighborhood to go somewhere else. But it's something that I think there's some that the applicant may identify and be able to do and that there will likely be other things that the town should continue to embark on consistent with or in addition to whatever the applicant may do.
Colleen Roy, 53 Elmwood Street. I just heard twice tonight that there aren't police monitoring Pleasant Street. And I see them hanging out in regularity under the high attention wires. So if you are speeding, I would slow down there. But they are monitoring Pleasant Street, I just wanted to say that.
You know, it makes me wonder, where the top's in here about the 85th percentile, which is 42 and 43 miles per hour. Who actually measured that? Where'd that data come from? Is that something you folks measured?
Yeah, so that was based on a speed count that we collected that was done in the area right near the site driveway. So that's what the speed was measured as vehicles are passing by where the site driveway would be. And really, part of the intent of collecting that data is so that we can determine what the required sightline would be at the site driveway. Because obviously, that's based on how fast people are going, how long you need to be able to see. So some areas of Pleasant Street, like was mentioned, are much narrower or have a sharper curve to them where you cannot physically drive 43 miles per hour without going off the road. So that's not necessarily the average speed across the entire road. That's the average speed of the cars as they were passing by where the site driveway will be.
I have two questions. First, on your, on the background trips on Pleasant Street...
First, on your, on the background trips on Pleasant Street, I don't think you accounted for the Fisherville project, right? The hundred units that are on Milbury Street, not Milbury, Main Street.
Yeah, that's correct. That was, that was one of the ones that was mentioned in Mr. Dandridge's letter.
Right, but that wasn't, so your numbers don't account for that?
Not directly, so we did include a background growth rate to grow traffic volumes out to a 2030 design year, which we used a one percent per year adjustment.
Right.
For that, which traffic volumes in the area based on historic traffic counts have generally been growing at about point five percent per year, so that growth rate is conservative that we did use. So, a lot of that may be accounted for in the growth rate, but in the end, what it effectively would do is it increases our no build condition volume and our build condition volume by the same amount. So, our net change in delay doesn't really change a whole lot by adding those few trips that would be generated by it.
Yeah, no, I realize it doesn't, it doesn't change the project's impacts, but I think it might inform kind of what the background condition is, and it's actually probably going to be a little bit worse than, I think, than what's in your report, because if Fisherville has a hundred units, if your project is creating a ten percent increase, I mean, so is Fisherville, potentially, if that traffic is all going north on Pleasant Street, which I don't know if it will, but it might be worth maybe asking you to go back and look at what those hundred units are going to do. Does that, does that make sense, Kevin, or, I mean, to add that to their background numbers?
I think the most important piece of it would be for how that might load into that signal warrant analysis that they're doing at the northern end, because it's another legitimate project that will contribute trips, and that when coupled with the background growth and the new trips from this project, may further substantiate that type of infrastructure.
Yep.
Okay, and then the second question was crosswalk, and I don't know where we left off on that. I mean, are you guys proposing a crosswalk across Pleasant to get to Christopher for pedestrians?
That's correct.
Did you look at, is there a design? I mean, are you doing any kind of, like, signal, or how's that going to?
So, the connection will be from Petersway across our site, and there will be a sidewalk to the existing sidewalk on Christopher, and just made some signage associated with that crosswalk.
But no signal.
No signal.
I, I, I don't know how other folks feel, but if traffic's going forty-three miles an hour, I mean, I don't know if that's, Kevin, do you have a comment on how safe that is?
We do a significant amount of pedestrian safety reviews and pedestrian bicycle design from municipalities and the state. There would likely be appropriate pedestrian crossing signs that can be oversized, but something like this particular location could potentially incorporate what we call rectangular rapid flash beacon, where if you push a button, it starts a series of alternating strobes to bring better alert. There are different metrics out there that the federal highway provides for the appropriateness of where those can be included, and I think that might be something that can just get added to that corridor safety study. But ultimately, you know, having ADA ramps, you know, the high visibility crosswalk markings, you know, thermoplastics that will last longer, regular reflective signs, with or without the rectangular rapid flashing beacons would be appropriate. But the speed, the posted speed and the volume are part of that assessment, but that's something that we can review with GPI before the next meeting.
Scott Nibisky, forty-nine Pleasant Street. So, those, that sidewalk you're referencing is on the other side of Christopher, and there's, that's, that's not near that property.
Yeah, I was going to say, slightly bespoke, it's going to cross to one side and then there'll be another crosswalk going across.
Correct, so as you're looking up Christopher, we will extend it around that radius to cross to the other side to connect.
And that side.
There just has a little lane in the other corner.
Second corner, and then.
And then across Christopher.
Another thing that's going to come to you now is that sidewalk you can't walk on that whole first, I walk every day, it's.
At Christopher?
Yes, that first part of it is, it's one-foot boulders. I mean, this is another thing that's going to come down, is, it's, we'll have to fix it, so.
Any other comments for traffic? Any other from the board, anyone? Then we'll kind of put a wrap on that. I think we have a plan. Folks are going to often do some work. We haven't established what our next meeting is, but you're going to do some work and hopefully in time for Kevin to review it before we get together. Okay. I think, Mr. Yohm, you have something you want to add for?
Yes, I just have two items that I'd like to discuss, and.
Oh, yes, microphone. Bill, microphone?
Oh, excuse me, microphone. Yes, thank you, Bill. I have, I want to make a few comments about three topics of concerns that I have in addition to what has been discussed tonight, and I'm not going to keep you much longer. And by the way, my phone with the phone is an adjustment for my hearing assist devices, so I don't want you to think I'm listening to a ballgame. We briefly discussed in a previous meeting the need for a peer review, and I'm asking and I'm requesting that a peer review be conducted by surface and groundwater hydrology and/or wetland scientists, consultants. And I ask myself, why am I asking for this? I believe a further study is badly needed regarding the potential impact this project may have, and I stress "may have," on it being in a water resource protection zone, which is Zone Two wellhead projection protection area, as shown on the Grafton GIS map. So, I think that that has to be looked at, and an additional impact it may have on the budding marshlands and pond for the rare of this posse, which is actually owned by the town of Grafton. It's a nine-point-three-acre posse of land, of conservation land. And I think that a firm that's very knowledgeable in wetlands has to look at the impact that this project may have on those two points. And as I looked at the plans that we got, the new plans, and I just got them a couple of days ago, and I've spent a lot of time looking at them, and the project plan sheet number C nine-one, which is topography, shows Pleasant Street at an elevation of three-hundred-and-twenty-eight feet, and that pond to the rare of this posse, and it's not part of this posse, it's owned by us and it's owned by the town, and that's at two-hundred-and-ninety-six feet elevation. That's a drop down in elevation of thirty-two feet from Pleasant Street, running across the field to the pond level. And when you think of thirty-two feet, John, you're an architect, what is this ceiling? Maybe twelve feet high? So, it's a thirty-two-foot drop. Now, the project is going to include grading, and it's going to change, you know, the topography of the project itself. If you could bring up sheet C five oh, Katrina, or do you have access to the sheets?
Katrina's out there.
Project plan sheet number five, C dash five point zero, the grading and drainage plan. This particular plan, and again, I've been, my eyeballs have been accustomed to looking at the rolled-up sheets here today, but if you look at this particular plan and you look right in the middle of the plan, it shows pronounced elevations and water protection zones. So, the, the change in elevation to the rare of this lot slopes down towards the marsh and the pond and the three water protection zones that exist in the, in the, in, around bodies of water. The first is, elevation is three-hundred-and-twelve feet at the hundred-foot water protection zone, and that's indicated on this map. And by the way, I'll give you a handout, and all of this information will be posted by Katrina sometime in the next few days, so you'll be able to go and look at the sheets and see specifically, you know, just what I'm talking about. The elevation at the fifty-foot water protection zone is three-hundred-and-eight feet, the elevation at the, at the twenty-five-foot no disturb zone, and that's a conservation bylaw that we have in the town, that any building you cannot disturb within twenty-five feet of it. This doesn't disturb that twenty-five-foot zone. But the plan shows, if you look at the, if you just bring that down a little bit, Katrina, and you look at the, the major plan, bring it up a little bit, if you would, please, and it's the infiltration basin two for the hundred-year storm, the surface elevation of that is three oh four. So, the back of this posse has a serious slope down to that marsh and to that pond. The drawdown pipes that you see in the spillway, the drawdown pipes on the riprap on the top, which is a stone, those pipes, that riprap is right at the edge of the twenty-five-foot no disturb zone. That issue, to me, needs to be thoroughly reviewed by a wetland scientist to assure me that we're not going to kill a pond by approving a project. And. One further point I'll make, and this has been.
Is it related though? Is it related to the conversation?
Yes, yeah, it's related, and, and I don't need a map for this, Katrina, thank you. I'm also requesting a sewer department review and study. The study by a consultant selected by the sewer department, and Paul Canoia, the superintendent of the sewer department, sent comments to the board in stating what he needs to have done to assure us that the connection being made at Christopher Drive is adequate. And I'm thinking about why have a sewer consultant studying the lines? Are the existing sewer street lines downstream from the proposed tie-in at Christopher Drive adequately sized to accommodate the additional waste flow from this hundred-and-four housing unit, one-hundred-and-eighty-eight-bedroom project, rather than a by-right single-family development, as this gentleman has pointed out, which would give them eleven single-family homes under normal development? Or they could increase the number of homes possibly as a 40B development, single-family homes. And I, I think that if the existing sewer lines are not of adequate size, the developer should then be responsible to upsize any existing street sewer lines downstream from Christopher Drive to accept the waste flow anticipated from this hundred-and-four-unit housing project. And we need to ensure, and I thought of my own personal experiences in past decades, I, in past decades, have owned a number of two-family houses in Newton, and I had the unique experience of having a blowout in a two-family house in the basement, and it's not pretty. It's not pretty for anyone, it's not pretty for the sewer department. It's an issue that if this proposed project, I just want to ensure that it does not create problems downstream, and I think the only way we're going to be assured of that is for the sewer department, based on the superintendent Paul Canoia's comments, be specifically chosen by them, not by the developer, not by us, to come in and do a complete study of the sewer connections and the downstream portion of that, because I have experienced the concerns of when that is not adequately assured. And thank you for your time and attention, and I have a handout that I'll give to everybody on the board, and there's a couple that I can give you, and it will be posted by Katrina on, you know, at some point, probably at the beginning of the week. Thank you.
So, to your first point with respect to conservation, I thought that's what Ecotec was being brought up.
They do. Not exactly. So, Ecotec's review is to look at the delineation of the wetland resource areas, the buffer zones, the delineation they provide. They're looking at the waiver requests, and he's going to give you some advice as to what he thinks about their waiver requests. Art is not a hydrologist, I don't think, and so I think what Bill is saying is that he's concerned about two things, I think. First, the impacts of the project on groundwater quality and on surface water quality being the pond. And those are related, but they're two separate impacts. And that, those impacts, I'm assuming that Bill's talking about or what he's concerned about are from stormwater system, there's no sediment system there, so it's just stormwater. So, that, I think, is outside of Art's scope and expertise. And we've had, we've had these issues come in the past with other projects. I remember going way back, Nugent Place, remember that one? And we brought in Scott Whorsley to look at that area issue. And I, I worked with Scott on a lot of projects, looking at those specific types of impacts. So, that, that is something that we could review. We could have someone like Scott, who's an expert at this, do a model, much the same way we model traffic impacts, we can model impacts of pollution from stormwater on the groundwater and on the pond. And I, you know, sitting here today, I have no idea what that would look like, but that's something that we could do, and I think it's justified because of the waivers they're requesting.
Yeah, I, I gotta be honest, I'm, conservation issues are not a strong area for me at all, and we kind of talked about this a little bit at the last meeting, not kind, we did talk about this at the last meeting, and I really thought that what Bill was asking for was what was the direction we're headed, and I actually kind of had the Scott Whorsley thing in mind before, to be fair to us. So, you know, I, I agree with Bill, I think that these, I'd like to, I want to make sure that this project is not going to affect that pond, in a nutshell, that's what it comes down to, and I think that's what people in the audience have said, you know, so if that means a different person than Ecotec, then I think we should go there, if we can. I just kind of skipped over that real quick, because I think the second issue Bill brought up, Paul Canoia's letter is on, is on the screen right now. I just assume that what Paul is asking for here, you're doing.
He already said he was going to look for his guy to generate, sorry, Chad Boardman, Eastland Partners. Yes, Steve spoke to Paul, and Paul said that he would get ahold of his engineering firm and do that will serve. Didn't think it would be a problem, but he wanted to put the information file for everybody here. We haven't received it today, but we'll follow up with Paul tomorrow.
Yeah, so my understanding is you're doing what he's asked for.
That's correct, yep.
Well, he's asking for, we'll get them.
Absolutely.
All right, all right, just wanted to share that. So, I think we can put that issue to bed.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Just connect, Chad, and.
Well, yes, potential, good point.
Just with the hydrology, we did speak about this a little bit at the last meeting. We understand that the wetlands would be looked at by Ecotec and Art Allen, and it's unfortunate Jeff's not here to speak to this too, but he didn't think that it was necessarily necessary to have the hydrology looked at. You know, we are in a water protection district, we are meeting the requirements set forth in the bylaw. We are meeting the requirements set forth in the bylaw, TSS removal. That will be vetted out with Art as part of his review as well. So maybe we let Art look at his information and then potentially make a decision from there. Would be my request. Or at least have Jeff chime in on this matter as a stormwater issue.
It's not really a Jeff issue. I mean, Jeff looks at whether the project complies with the stormwater standards in Stormwater Handbook. And that's more civil engineering. And I think what Bill is raising is more of a water quality impact issue, which is not... Yes, stormwater standards are gated to water quality impacts. I understand with TSS and, so there is an element to that. The stormwater standards require you to treat the water so it doesn't gloat. And that's a big part of the stormwater analysis. But the hydrological impacts that Bill is raising really go to another level of analysis, which is not covered by stormwater standards. It's not, the stormwater standards wouldn't protect the pond the way you're asking the pond to be reviewed and analyzed. So this project could very well comply with the state's stormwater standards, but it still may present a threat to the pond. There's ponds across the state that are being utrified based upon stormwater pollution that the stormwater standards are not protecting. And so it's.
And we saw that firsthand with, it was Nugent that Scott Worsley was involved with. But I mean, I mean, so maybe Scott kind of takes it to another level. And we saw.
And it doesn't mean the project can't go forward. It just means that there might be a different way to design the stormwater system or to provide additional layers of treatment. It's not, or pull things back in the pond. And it could be different changes. It doesn't mean that the project is gonna be, can't go forward.
Mr. Vice Chair, I may just make one point.
One of the things impressed me today when I reviewed the new plan that they presented is a sheet that shows the TESP wells that have, that were drilled around the, and I forget how, there may have been 10 or 12. And I looked at the soil conditions. And I was very impressed at the sandy soil conditions of this field. So we have had water running across this field forever and sloping down from 328 feet to 296 feet at the pond. And it's been going through not clay soil, but sandy soil. So I suggest that you look at that. And I'm not a wetland scientist. But I do know that on the Cape, one of the things they have is sandy soil and it's the percolation problems that they have with their septic systems because they leach through very, very quickly. So I was very, very impressed with that. And as I thought about all of these points with sewage, and I thought about that pond in the back. And I just don't wanna see that be affected by this project or any other project.
Thank you. Any other comments or thoughts from the board? So at this point, we have a, more work to be doing with traffic. I think the environmental news also in play at this point, right?
That's the process.
Yeah. I guess the question is, how much time do you need for the work that you're gonna do traffic-wise?
Yeah, so we would need a couple of weeks to get our stuff done and then get it back over to Kevin for his review. So I don't wanna put any words into his mouth on how quickly he can turn things around, but.
I think if we had two weeks to review.
Yep.
Have we done? I don't know if audio's coming through. If we had, if we had two weeks, I think that would be appropriate.
Yeah, so we're, we're trying to hear when our next meeting would be. So we're at the 15th. We go out, you just rattled out four weeks. That would bring us to the 13th of July. I'm actually out of country until the 15th. Yeah, we look at a meeting in the week of the 17th. We look at Thursday. I may not be around Thursday the 20th, but Wednesday the 19th, maybe?
What day do you expect?
Wednesday, July 19th for our next meeting?
I'm good.
You may have conflict, but you said you could have somebody else, right?
Yes, yeah. We can have coverage, I think, all of you on vacation one of those weeks. But we've got enough resources where we can get through it and have our presentation here as well.
Dan, that'll give me, 19th, 4th, 5th?
Yep.
And I think I can do so. I haven't, I don't have in front of me the overall timeline. How are we doing? Between you two, when?
Started. Dan, did it stop when we did all the state harbor?
I think that you guys agreed that it stayed. The regulation's kind of a gray area. But I think that you guys agreed that we had roughly a month of stay. Is that?
I believe so.
That sounds right.
Yeah.
We confirmed that, it was around 30 days.
So March 23rd started.
So we're about three months into it, minus one.
Yeah, so.
If March 23rd is when it came in.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's three months ago. Minus one, so we're two months into it. That'll be three months.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
That's my hope is that we talk traffic and Art's stuff as well.
Yes, and. So ideally, Art will file something well in advance of that date. You guys can respond to it. And then we can have a good discussion about the environmental issues on July 19th. We can have a discussion, a follow-up on traffic on that night. And then the question is, do you wanna do anything tonight about the hydrology issue? Or do you wanna wait until July to make a decision on that?
I kind of defer to you, Dan, but I just, my gut tells me we probably should wait till we hear what Art has to say. I don't, that just feels right to me, but.
So in July, we'll be down to three months? So you have any time?
Yeah. Yeah, okay. All right, anybody, anyone have any last comments? All right, so it would entertain a motion to continue case number, what is this?
892.
892? Continue on case number 892 to July 19th at 7:00 PM. I think it's gonna be in back, we're going back to the municipal center. We don't have anywhere near the car we used to, so it'll be back in the municipal, in the municipal center. So Wednesday, July 19th at 7:00 PM.
Soon, second.
Okay, motion made, seconded, any discussion? All in favor? Those? I don't know what she said. Mr. Waller, it's your meeting.
Wait a minute, I want to ask Dan a question before he left.
Do you want that to be part of, it's not an agenda, is that to be part of the meeting?
About a 40B.
Talk to him. But I think you should talk to him. We're not, we aren't playing on agendas, right?
Why we have to?
What are you supposed to do?
Why, the 40B question, we're doing 40B? I don't see why you can't ask. But your procedure's on a 40B.
We're, no, we're still in here. Why don't you ask the 40B? I don't understand.
I've been told lately that the appeal process for a 40B has changed.
Hey, if you're having a conversation, can you please go outside? We're still in session. Thank you.
Yeah, and actually Peter needs a mic for the recording.
I was told since the last meeting that the appeal process, appealing a 40B by a private citizen has changed that you have to put up a $50,000 bond. Is that?
Is your mic working? There you go.
Is that working?
There's, I mean, what I was told, and if it's not true, I'm happy. Because I've always said to somebody on any 40A or 40B case, if you don't, you don't like a decision, you can always appeal to Superior Court.
Right.
But what I've been told, you have to put up a $50,000 bond. And if you lose, you forfeit it.
So not, not, exactly. So two years ago, the legislation did pass a bill, a law that gives judges the discretion to order a plaintiff to post a bond up to $50,000. The developer defendant in those cases can file a motion for a bond. And then there's a hearing. And then the judge can decide whether to order the posting of a bond or not. The judge has to make a finding that, not necessarily of bad faith, but at least a finding that the plaintiff's appeal is speculative or lacks merit, you know, lacks strength. And if the judge makes that discretionary finding, then the judge can order the bond to be posted. But there is that element. So if there's a good faith and reasonable basis behind the appeal, a judge should not order the posting of the bond. It's meant to discourage frivolous appeals.
Is this just 40A and 40B cases or anything to do with Superior Court?
No, just zoning cases. It's under the Zoning Act, Section 17, which is the judicial review.
And the House and the Senate voted for this?
Yeah, they've assigned it. It's part of the bill that did a lot of things, changed the quantum vote for zoning amendments. It happened a year and a half ago, years.
Were there that many frivolous cases to bring this up?
There's a feeling that zoning appeals were slowing down economic growth in the Commonwealth, that they were a hindrance to projects. And so, yes, there was a push to create this statute. And unfortunately, judges were actually issuing or ordering the bond without making these findings. And my law firm actually challenged that. And we took it all the way up to the state's highest court and even got that overturned. And so now, now judges have to make that finding that there's at least some indicia of bad faith in order to, in order to order the posting of the bond. So there is some, but yes, it's a new law that... It's a new law that does unfortunately cause plaintiffs in a lot of cases to think twice because they would forfeit that amount if they lost and a judge decided that it was lacking vigor. But my hope is that judges will be reasonable and, you know, make these types of findings in good faith themselves and not punish people for exercising their right to appeal. So I think that could be a real problem.
I mean, that's what it sounds like to me, a punishment for appealing.
Thank you.
So can I have a vote to adjourn?
So, maybe?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
We're here.